Cable is ready. We'd like to invite you, welcome to our meeting. Invite you to stand and introduce yourself.
I am glad my name is Mr. Tyler of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one liberty, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dorati.
Bren.
Volz.
Here.
Rappaport.
Present.
Richards. Sharp.
Present.
Spiezak.
Here.
Stan Chow is absent, excused, and Hornbuckle.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
So moved.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Spiezak, supported by Commissioner Hornbuckle. Roll call, please.
Roll call vote to approve the November 3 meeting minutes. Dorati?
Yes.
Volz?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Spiezak?
Yes.
And Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. At this time of our meeting, if there's anything that is not on the agenda you'd like to bring forward, this is the time. I see nothing. We will move into our agenda. Our first case is case 1734A, site plan and special land approval for a medical and adult use marijuana retail business. Distray you.
Thank you, Chairman. The subject property here is located on the south side of Ford Road, west of Newburgh. It's located up on your screen, highlighted in purple. We had a GIS malfunction in the office, so this is a different aerial than what you're used to seeing. The property comprises of about 35,000 square feet. It's been combined into two. The previously existing parcels are shown, highlighted in purple on your screen, but again, the applicant and petitioner combined them into one parcel a couple of months ago. The property is Zone CB1. That's our low intensity commercial business district. Currently contains two buildings on the parcel to your left-hand side to the west, including a light blue dilapidated warehouse structure that is about 5,000 square feet, currently used to store pet food and supplies. The petitioner proposes to demolish all of these structures on the site and to construct approximately 5,700 square foot building that will contain a marijuana retail business for both adult use and medical use. The southern portion of the building, I think it's the southeast portion of the building, I'll show you where that is a bit exactly, is proposed as a lease space for something different or something other than the marijuana retailer. At this time, it's unknown what that retail tenant would be. I don't want to say for certain, but my memory recalls a potential coffee shop there. The petitioner is seeking site plan and special land use approval to proceed with this project. Really quickly, the adjacent land uses and zoning in the area, north across the street from Ford Road, is CB1, developed with a medical office here in this area. Property to the south is Zone PUD and is developed with a skilled nursing center. It also encompasses this property, which is Zone PUD, and that's a future commercial development portion of which you approved a couple of months ago, or several months ago for the car wash and a Dairy Queen project that will be coming to you in the early half of 2021, or 22. CB4 to the east, developed by an auto repair shop, currently vacant. The property just sold, not sure to who. Property to the west is Zone CB1 and is developed by Westland Dog Food over here. 2018 master plan, future land use designation for the site is neighborhood commercial office services. Just real quick, I'm going to get into the analysis, but to define marijuana retail business, it's basically what people call often as a dispensary. People can walk in, purchase marijuana products for consumption, so it is not a grow or processor, it's just a retail operation. The subject property, so we have a marijuana business ordinance regulating the location of these various marijuana businesses, and marijuana retailers are required to have certain separation from schools, from homes, and we talked about a lot of other things, but ultimately just counsel felt comfortable 250 feet from homes or other residential zone properties and 1,000 feet from schools, which is actually in the state law. The subject property meets these distant separation requirements. Getting into the site layout, the site will be accessed by one full service or full movement site access point with width of approximately 27 feet. Currently, as you may be able to see, there's two driveways at the site. One will be closed. MDOT, I believe, reviewed the scope of work and had no additional comments or issues with the existing or proposed entry or exit point. For parking, the zoning ordinance specifically for marijuana retailers calls for one space per every 100 square feet of gross floor area, and then I'm also putting in my staff report, one off-street parking space for every 200 square feet gross floor area attributable to retailers, and that is pertinent only to the port-floor area portion for the unknown retail tenant. So if you combine those, the requirement of 51 off-street parking spaces and 52 are proposed. The applicant is proposing a six-foot-high masonry screening wall along the south side to screen the adjacent skilled nursing home. Additional landscaping is proposed throughout the site, exceeding zoning ordinance requirements, and as you probably saw, the landscape plan goes into a lot more detail. The proposed building will be constructed using high-quality building materials that are compliant with the zoning ordinance. Proposed materials include brick, limestone, CMU block, and a variety of other elements not typically seen, durable wood materials and EFS for accent that we do see a lot of. All requirements are listed in the staff report. I won't mention them. They're all compliant with the zoning district. Exterior lighting is also compliant with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. There's a photometric study included in your backup. The developer does propose some additional site amenities not typically seen or required by the zoning ordinance. They are repairing or actually replacing the sidewalk, I believe, along the Ford Road frontage. There's a decorative fence with piers in accordance to DDA standards being installed along the Ford Road frontage, and some bicycle parking and racks is being proposed. Out of the marijuana business ordinance, it requires marijuana businesses, all marijuana businesses to be open only between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., so just putting that on the record. The petitioner is agreeable to that. It's also a condition of approval if you decide to recommend approval. Let me see here. And I guess finally I'll just wrap up before stating my recommendation. The proposed use as a retail establishment is consistent with the existing uses and zoning within this general area. The proposal is compliant, as I've previously mentioned, with parking, access, site screening, landscaping, lighting, and drainage. And there's a variety of regulatory measures in place in the marijuana business ordinance that provide the city a means of control in the event that nuisances do arise. So we feel comfortable that we will be able to administratively address any nuisances. And we do have a marijuana, what is it? Marijuana review board that can rescind the license if there's a un-nuisances that arises. So the administration and planning department recommend this petition be forwarded to the city council with recommendation to approve, subject to the six recommendations. I actually feel the need to read these on the record. I'll read these on the record just for this one. We have another marijuana case with the same exact conditions that I won't repeat again. Number one, a security plan that complies with the marijuana business ordinance must be submitted to the planning department and approved by the police department. For these two businesses, the security plan was submitted and reviewed by the police department. They had no objection during time of construction, opening, and certificate of occupancy. We require the final plan to also be submitted to the police department. The marijuana license, business licensee shall enter into a legally binding community benefits agreement. The community benefits agreement shall detail all proposed voluntary services, donations, and any and all other benefits pledged by the licensee on its initial application. And this should be mutually agreed upon by the two parties. Number three, continued compliance with all applicable local and state laws, including but not limited to the Westland Uniform Marijuana Business Ordinance. Any violation of any state marijuana law shall be deemed a violation of this business ordinance. All signage and advertising must comply with all applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance and the marijuana business ordinance. As previously mentioned, hours of operation to the public must be limited between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Number six, the facility must employ a facility-wide odor control plan designed for marijuana retailers for proper ventilation, odor control, and noxious gas mitigation. We have a variety of marijuana business types that are going to be coming in front of you, growers, processors, retailers, so we're asking the retailers to comply with one that is appropriate for retailers and so on. That's all I got. I know a variety of individuals representing this company are here tonight to also answer any questions you may have. I'd be happy to answer any you have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The petitioner in the audience.
Yes.
Would you come forward, please, and introduce yourself?
Thank you. I'm Mike Beck. I'm with Common Citizen and are Director of Community Government Affairs. Brought with us tonight from the team, we have our architects, we have our civil engineer. If there's any questions, I also have Marla Wall, who's head of our retail side. If you have questions about how our retail facility works, or at least a Common Citizen retail facility works. We have some renderings. I don't know if you'll be able to see them all now, but...
I think if you would face those, so the audience could see those. We have renderings.
Okay. I mean, we might not have all of these, but we'll have...
You can put them along.
Yeah, one along, okay.
Yeah, put them on both sides, so both sides of our audience can view those. Thank you.
We currently operate retail facilities in Hazel Park, in City of Battle Creek, in Detroit, and our flagship store in Flint, Michigan, which actually won, was it 2019, North America International Shopping Center Design Award for a retail facility under 5,000 square feet. Hadn't been done in the cannabis space yet, so it's pretty proud of that. We're about finished construction with our retail facility in Lansing. We are here in Westland, and we've got a couple of other irons in the fire, but we're pretty excited about coming here. We believe in community benefits. Recently, over this last Thanksgiving holiday, throughout the state of Michigan, we had a program where we gave out over 2,000 turkeys in various locations, where we have either interest or actually facilities. And we worked here with Westland. We've already been doing some partnering in the city of Westland as well. So if you have questions on the site plan, the special land use, our COO and one of our founders, Joe Jarvis, was going to be here tonight. He had a family issue. He's a southeast side of the state guy. All of the founders came out of the southeast side of Michigan, so... Questions on the site plan, question on SLU, question on us, Common Citizen, happy to answer any of them.
All right, very good. This is a public hearing, so we're going to open it up to the audience, and then we will bring you back for any questions or answers and from the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone on my right wish to speak on this? Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left wish to speak on this? Yes. Be kind enough to introduce yourself, sir?
Of course. My name is Tim Deemer, D-I-E-M-E-R. I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Jacobs &amp; Deemer, PC, in Detroit. Want to thank you for your time and for your attention tonight. I'm here to speak on the first two items of the agenda, the site plan and land use approvals. As the planning commissioners were, following the granting of conditional licenses, there were a number of legal challenges made to the ordinance itself in the manner in which it was implemented. I believe five separate lawsuits were filed. They were all consolidated. I represent four such businesses whose licenses were denied. Harper Ventures, MHS Westland, Exclusive Brands, and Combined Cannabis of Michigan. Dan Pollack of Combined Cannabis is here tonight as well. There are two aspects of the litigation I would like to briefly address. First, the basis of the dismissal of legal challenges to the city's actions. The trial judge in the case upheld a waiver and release clause that was found in the application that all the businesses had to submit to even be considered to operate a cannabis business in the city of Westland. The trial judge did not address the merits of the legal challenges that were made to the ordinance, the scoring rubric, or the manner in which the ordinance was interpreted and applied. The judge said that the waiver and release agreement barred all claims of all parties. There were challenges under the Michigan statute which authorized the marijuana business to operate. There were challenges under the Open Meetings Act. There were claims for gross negligence. And the court clipped all of those claims on the basis of the waiver and release. My role in this case is I'm an appellate attorney. I have filed an appeal from the trial judge's decision. And my belief is that the trial judge's decision is going to be reversed. The waiver and release agreement, I'm sorry, waiver and release clause in the application was not allowed by the marijuana business ordinance. I heard Director Ayub reference the importance of the ordinance many times earlier tonight. Under Section 27-10A, the city was authorized to include a waiver and release agreement as a condition of a license. The ordinance is not allowed to make a waiver and release clause a condition of an application. That's a completely different section of the ordinance, Section 27-9. That's one reason I believe the trial judge's rulings likely to be reversed. The Michigan Constitution provides all business entities, such as Combined Cannabis, the other entities I represent, the right to have licensing and decisions reviewed by the court system. The inclusion of a waiver and release agreement precluded that right. And again, that's enshrined in the Constitution. We hear a lot of things run unconstitutional. If I don't like something unconstitutional, that's an overused phrase. I know the other lawyer here would agree with me on that one. But in this instance, Article 6, Section 28 of our Constitution provides this constitutional right. Third, even if a waiver and release is enforceable, it's been the rule in Michigan for decades that a waiver and release agreement, such as the one that's found in the application, can be applied only to a limited number of claims. Claims for ordinary negligence, slipping and falls, car accidents. If you go sign up at Planet Fitness, you agree not to sue them if you slip on something by the water fountain. Michigan law does not allow a waiver and release clause to prohibit claims for intentional misconduct, gross negligence, constitutional claims, all the things that we've wedged here. So it's my belief, at the end of the day, at the end of this appeal, and we're doing everything we can to get this appeal decided as quickly as possible, that the trial judge's decision is going to be reversed and that we're going to be back in front of the judge, addressing the scoring rubric. We'll be back to square one, going through all this stuff all over again. And these renderings are lovely, and I don't want to take anything away from Common Citizen. Just looks like a really nice facility. But I heard demolition was being planned and other steps, and I'm here to try to put the brakes on things. The other aspect of litigation I'd like to highlight is, early on in the case, there was a, what's called a status quo order entered. And that status quo order prohibited the city and the parties from acting on the conditional license. It precluded site plan approvals, which is what's up for debate today, and other land use decisions that are also up for debate today. That status quo order was in effect. It protected all parties. It protected the city, protected the businesses that were awarded licenses, protected the businesses that were not awarded licenses. And that was in everyone's interest to have that status quo order in place. The trial judge allowed that status quo order to expire. Two separate appeals have been challenged, have been filed to challenge the expiration of status quo order. I filed one on behalf of my four clients, Loom, another applicant that did not have the license granted, who I believe someone from their group was going to be here today. But they've also asked the Court of Appeals to impose a status quo order. I've done it on behalf of my four clients. Loom's attorneys have done it on behalf of their client. It's my expectation that by the end of the month, end of December, the Court of Appeals will let us know whether they're going to reimpose the status quo. I'm not sure. I'm not going to make any prediction about what the Court of Appeals is likely to do. But if they were to impose a status quo order, once again, it would put a halt to these proceedings. And going forward today, when we expect a decision by the end of the month, seems premature. I believe there's another planning commission meeting next month. By that time, we will probably have a clear direction from the Court of Appeals about whether a status quo order is going to be entered. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have about the litigation, the appeal process. If you have any questions, otherwise, I really appreciate the time and the opportunity to be here, to be here tonight.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are we able to direct any questions?
Yes. Do you want to question it, sir?
Excuse me. If I could, I'd like to address a couple of the things by...
Of course, counsel. Yes. First.
Is it Deemer? I'm sorry, Deemer. I just want to make sure I'm saying it right. So I just want to address a couple of things that were said by Mr. Deemer here, and I certainly don't envy you having to comb through the roughly eight hours of summary disposition, oral argument that I was actively involved in. You know, my understanding from being on that call and actually hearing the judge make her ruling on the record is that there was more than one bases for the dismissal, and the waiver and release was one of two separate independent bases for that, so I just want to point that out. Secondly, I also want to address that, you know, this was originally brought to the Court of Appeals on an emergency basis, and it's my understanding that at this point, the Court of Appeals is not treating this as an emergency. So I just want to point that out for the, for the commission, those two, those two specific points. It's still obviously actively going on in the appeals process, but sometimes litigation goes on for years, so...
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rappaport?
Yes. For the record, Mr. Grisco is not the only attorney up here.
Okay.
I am also a practicing attorney. So your comment, your, well, your information seemed to suggest, you mentioned that there was a status quo order. Are we currently under the restriction of a status quo order, or was that rescinded by the judge?
First off, my apologies, Mr. Rappaport, for not being a attorney.
No, we don't wear signs. It's fine.
There was a status quo order entered in, I believe, March of 2021, and it was allowed to expire by the judge as of September 20 of 2021. There is no existing status quo order as of today. And we've asked the Court of Appeals to reimpose the same terms and conditions as a status quo order that the trial judge had imposed, and the parties had agreed to in March of 2021. There were a series of, there were five cases. One judge granted a TRO, one judge granted a stay. They were all consolidated. And then as of June 8 and June 14 of 2021, there was one omnibus status quo order that put a halt to all of these proceedings while the legal challenges were made. That order was allowed to expire. You were on the call. The judge on the record of September 10th said, "I'm going to give you 10 more days of status quo time," and as of September 20th, it's going to expire.
So practicing a little bit of active listening, the answer, the short answer is, no, we are not currently under the restriction of a status quo order.
Correct.
Okay. But you believe that we may eventually?
Correct.
Okay. So one of the, one of the issues that we have to wrestle with up here as a representative of both the citizenry in making our recommendation to the, to the city council and to the city as functionaries, is we not only need to consider fairness to you and potentially your client, clients, but we also need to consider the fairness to the, to the, to the petitioner that's before us. And one of my personal concerns, I'm not sure who up here might share it, is if we were to be awfully kind and generous to delay our proceedings for you and your clients, and you arguably have the potential not to be successful in your appeals, we would have unnecessarily delayed the process for the, for the petitioner in front of us currently. Are you willing, or is your client willing, to compensate them for the, for the, for the delay in, in process?
Willing to...
There's, there's a certain amount of money involved in delays in the planning and development process. What you're suggesting is potentially delaying this for a month, potentially two months, and arguably, as Mr. Grisco pointed out, potentially years. What do you, what do you propose? We are currently under no obligation to not move forward. What do you propose to do to balance the scales out for what you're actually asking us to do?
It is my belief that by the end of this month, the Court of Appeals will decide yes or no as to whether to reimpose the status quo. So I'm hearing demolition and all sorts of other things. Let's say the Court of, I mean, it's, you're a lawyer. It's possible the Court of Appeals turns me down. It's possible the Court of Appeals turns Loom down. All of those are certainly within the realm of possibility. No one's disputing that. But if the Court of, if, if the commission were to approve the site plan and land use approvals today, city council does the same thing, and then at the end of the month, Court of Appeals says, "No, we're going to put that status quo order back in place," then that would have, that would unfairly harm Common Citizen or the other applicants that were granted license. They might be taking steps and find out, "No, no, no. You moved too quickly. Slow things down." So I believe the Court of Appeals will decide this by the end of this month of whether to impose a status quo. I was contacted by the clerk's office today, and they are asking for all the parties to file briefs on the status quo issue by no later than December 8 at noon, which is one week from today. And then the Court of Appeals will, they'll be submitted to a panel, three panel of judges. They'll make a decision by the end of the month whether to impose a status quo. So the status quo is not just for the benefit of my four clients or for any individual. It's for the benefit of the city. It's for the benefit of Common Citizen and everybody else, because there's a very real possibility of a reversal by the Court of Appeals on the underlying decision that dismissed all of the claims and knocked out all the legal challenges. That's also something that I believe the commission should be considering. And my view of the law is that the Court of Appeals is not going to look favorably on a pre-dispute waiver and release agreement in an application for a business license when the ordinance itself does not allow such a thing, and I don't believe the Constitution allows such a thing. And even such a thing, for lack of a better legal term, were allowed, it would only cover a fraction of the claims that are issued, and that this litigation is going to be very active, once again, in front of way of kind of strict court.
Okay, well, that's, that's quite verbose. However, my issue is, is that in the event that the, that the court will eventually grant a stay or a, you mentioned that there would then be harm to your clients. Well, that's an issue for the courts to decide, because they've already made their decision, and they're, and they're subject to it. And you'd have your argument with them as to harm that they caused. But you're asking us without the, without the, the safety of a court order that would restrict us from doing things that we're supposed to be doing, which is our job to do, that we potentially could be under mandamis order to, to do if an attorney on the other side were to come to us. You're asking for us without the, without the, the direction or protection of a court order to make an arbitrary decision to hold off to do our job, and that's just unreasonable. You're asking us to take on a, a legal liability. Now, did you consider putting forth a, an emergency motion for a, for a, for a status quo order? And if you, and if you did, and that was rejected, that would be information that you'd need to, that you have to, that you would have honestly the ethical requirement of candor to, to bring to our attention.
Let me address that in some ways.
Chairman, can I speak?
Yes, excuse me.
Yeah, sorry.
We're, we're dealing with a site plan and special land use case. If, if the petition, if the planning commission wants to table this for some reason, that's, that's fine. That's your, your call to make, but we need to focus on the... that's fine, that's your, your call to make, but we need to focus on the site plan and the special land use approval tonight.
Agreed. Well, we could, obviously, we could argue this-
Debate it for a long time.
Debating for a long time.
We lawyers are good at that.
But my, my point is, is that while we, we have heard you, sir, our, our responsibility is to make a recommendation based on the, the desires of the citizens. And we do, we do appreciate your perspective, letting us know that we might have legal concerns to consider as well. And I thank you for your time.
And to answer your question, an emergency motion has been filed. It was filed by Loom last night at eight, eight o'clock. I'll be filing my own emergency motion. So such an emergency motion is filed, to get this decision as quickly possibly can. The last thing I want to do is file the legal challenges, and then sandbag at the end of the day, come back and say, "Ha ha, everybody, look what happened." I'm trying to be as transparent as possible, appear before you, let you know what I have been doing on behalf of my clients and what else is going on in the litigation. But that's the sole purpose of, of my attendance here tonight, and again, I really appreciate the fact that you gave me so much time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on my right wish to speak? Anyone? Anyone on my left? Yes, sir. Would you come forward and give us your name, sir?
Hello, my name is Daniel Pollak. I am one of the owners of Combined Cannabis of Michigan. I'm going to briefly reiterate some of the points that Mr. Deemer made, and just wanted to make a specific point that there's more than two parties in this between those granted licensure and those that were not granted licensure. There is also the residents of Westland, and when it comes to similar situations like we've seen in Warren, where businesses that were awarded conditional licensure and moved forward with those plans, and then were later determined that in that case, a judge ruled that Warren violated the Open Meetings Act in accordance with those rulings, and therefore the licensures that were awarded, those conditional licensures were in violation of state law. But as a result of Warren's conditional licensees proceeding, the amount of litigation and the monetary value as such ballooned, and as a result, they're now going through a much larger litigation than they were initially, and the monetary value, because not only is it an issue now with the businesses that were not awarded licensure, but obviously those that were acted upon it and have now been ruled that that licensure was in violation of state statute, is harmful to the residents in that case of Warren. But to the points made this evening, that those similar issues would be for the, the protection, not necessarily of, while there are protections for both common citizen and the city and the, everyone involved, it also goes back to the residents that are taxpaying, and at the end of the day, would be the ones paying the bill for any litigation that if a, a ruling were to be made in that favor. I think I'm going to be brief, we've already discussed this fairly depth, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but at this time, that's all I had to say.
I think we're good, sir. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else? We'll open up the commission.
I have one question.
Yes.
They said they filed an appeal. That takes how long before it gets to a judge?
The attorney that spoke said that he expects a decision by the end of the month, so. But that would, and, and just to be clear, so just on the process, you know, that motion, briefing schedule, decision ultimately, when it comes down, is just, as I understand it, as to whether or not there should be a status quo or a stay order entered that would stop the sort of city's licensing process, okay? That doesn't decide the case. And in fact, more than likely, even if the city, which I don't necessarily expect, but even if the city totally lost the appeal, it would just sort of end up back in litigation. It wouldn't necessarily be that the Court of Appeals would pick, you know, different winners or losers, or, or whatever the case may be. That's just sort of a note on the process. I think to Mo's earlier point, you know, the city, the, the planning commission has before it today, site plan approval, special land use approval, and there's, you know, certain factors, obviously, in the ordinance that weigh for or against granting those types of things, and so that's really the planning commission's duty is to weigh those statutory factors in determining whether or not to recommend a special land use approval and site plan approval.
And when does, when does this go up to city council?
I think that's to be determined, so. Yeah. That's all I have.
Remind everybody, we are recommending board, and it is our responsibility to make a recommendation on this. So any other comments, the commission? Yes.
To the petitioner, what type of ventilation system would you be using?
We're going to be using package rooftop units with both HEPA filters as well as carbon filters built into it. All exhaust fans from all the restrooms or any areas will also have carbon filtration built into the system so that we can mitigate any type of odor or any escape of odor from the facility itself.
Because there's been some dispensaries out past, and you can smell them before you even hit it, so.
Yeah, no, we, we've used these systems on other buildings, and it's effective, it's efficient, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Motion is in order?
Before a motion is made, I just did want to make a, a normal comment as a normal citizen. I, I do note, I took a decent look through the, through the proposal, and the facility that's proposed is, is very nice, and I would like to compare and take a moment to compare and contrast it with, with the dispensary that, that exists just off of Van Born Road and Lily, uh, Hannon, just off of Van Born and Hannon. Obviously, it's been in operation in that area for a little bit of time now, and, I mean, I, I certainly don't want to speak ill of their business, I'm sure that they do a good business, but it is, it, it doesn't look very professional. It actually operates a little bit, nobody's allowed to, even before the, before the COVID situation, nobody was allowed to go into the actual dispensary. There's, it, it kind of functions the way that an illicit drug operation operated prior, where the, where there was a, an in-between person that, that you actually dealt with. And I think that, that a move like this, and a facility like this, which I'm sure that other, other potential people, just to be fair to our, to our guests, would have proposed and executed. I believe this goes a long way to, to mitigating some of the, some of the demonizing rhetoric that's, that's gone around with, with the, with marijuana use. And I'm very much in, in approval of a, of a professional and well-run facility.
Motion is in order?
I have a comment first.
Yes.
Just to comment on what you were speaking of, Attorney Rappaport, there's a facility in another city that when you drive by there, all you see are people hanging around, lots of cars, people just standing in line outside. Is that what we're going to have here if we approve this tonight? We'll see people just standing around? I don't want to see that.
Sure, if you'd like to come back up, that'd be fine.
Just to find the answer, we don't have a facility where people are standing outside.
If you would get a little bit closer to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
We don't have people hanging around or standing outside. We have a very professional establishment. We pride ourselves on giving education to those that come in to our facility, as well as, you know, potentially, you know, teaching what our facility is about, but at no time do we have anybody hanging outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Motion? David.
Great.
Well.
With regard to case number 1735A, site plan and special land use approval for a medical and adult use marijuana retail business, which includes-
Can I, can I jump in for a minute?
Absolutely.
When, when you were talking, you said, the lawyer for, there, are, are you, were you speaking also about the land use approval for case number 2254 also?
I, I ask a question, yes, that would relate to both agenda items, unless you want to hear from me another 10 minutes, I'm happy to just say everything I said before.
I thought that, that you were talking about both of them.
I just want to clarify real quick, guys, that the, the, the micro business, which is the other item on the agenda tonight, was not in any way involved in the litigation, nor did the stay order that was in effect for a period of time have anything to do with the micro business.
Okay. All right, now, David, go ahead and make your motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Regarding case number 1735A, site plan and special land use approval for a medical and adult use marijuana retail business, which includes a separated space for an unknown tenant at 37655 Ford Road, south side of Ford Road, between Hicks and Newburg Road.
Here's a public hearing, we have to close, sir.
I understand.
Between Morley and Huff.
Michigan Pyramid, AKA common citizen Joseph Jarvis. This time, I'd like to move to close the public hearing, waive the normal rules, and make a determination that the proposal as submitted appears to, to satisfy the standards outlined by the administration in the Westland zoning ordinance, and therefore, recommendation is, the recommendation is set, will be sent to the, to the city council for approval. This is subject to, well, potentially subject to an issue from the, from the administration.
And the six items listed, sir.
Depending on, on the results of a different one.
It would be the, the conditions as read by the planning director.
Okay.
Yes.
Subject to the conditions as read by the planning director earlier in the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grisco. That is the subject.
Support. Did that include the six items that, that Rayu had read? Six conditions? Yes.
As subject to the, to the conditions outlined by the administration.
Very good. Motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Spiezak. Roll call, please.
Let's see. Roll call votes, you write an approval with conditions of the site plan and special land use approval for a medical and adult use marijuana retail business, case number 1735A. Taranti.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Spiezak.
Yes.
Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, folks. Good luck with the city council. Thank you.
No, you can't take it back.
We will move into our next case, which is also a public hearing. It's case 2254, special land use approval for marijuana micro business at 38, Commissioner Rappaport, please, at 38400 Abruzzi Drive. Mr. Rayu.
Thank you, chairman. The subject property here is located on the northeast corner of Abruzzi and Hicks, up on your screen, highlighted in purple, or outlined in purple. The property comprises of about 1.22 acres with frontage on Hicks and Abruzzi. The property is zoned I-1 light industrial and is developed with a 1,600 square foot industrial building. The petitioner proposes to locate a marijuana micro business in a vacant 7,000 square foot space within the existing building. There's no new construction here, not really much going on on the exterior as it relates to the building itself or the footprint of the building, just an interior build out to accommodate the micro business if approved. The petitioner is seeking special land use approval for the micro business. Properties surrounding this site are all zoned I-1 light industrial and developed with a variety of industrial office-type buildings, with the exception of the property to the north, the long rectangular-shaped parcel there that is zoned R6, two-family residential, and currently a single-family dwelling exists at the site. A micro business is a marijuana business that incorporates a small-scale grow operation, a processor, and a retail facility similar to the one you just heard, all under the same Similar to the retailer, marijuana micro businesses are required to comply with distance separation requirements. However, it's a little bit different for micro businesses, they are only required to be 1,000 feet away from a school. And this property location complies with that. This site is accessed via two full, full-service driveways, one off of Hicks, you can kind of see right here, and then one off of Abruzzi Drive in the industrial subdivision right For parking, one off-street parking space is required for every 500 square feet gross floor area for the grower and for the processor, so we look at the floor plan to, to get those numbers. And then 100, one per 100 square feet for the retail operation. Again, studying the floor plan to get that number. So that requirement total is 32 for the entire operation, and there are 44 proposed for the micro business. There are some overhead automobile bays, and micro businesses are allowed to have overhead bays, but they cannot face any adjacent roadways, and that is being complied with here. They're already existing, they face east, and they're on the east side of the building here, away from the road. The site contains a six-foot masonry screening wall that's in good condition, that's directly adjacent and separating the residential property right here where my cursor is on the screen. Landscaping is provided and proposed in an amount that exceeds minimum ordinance requirements. The developer will be installing new trees, annual planters, shrubs, and additional landscaping throughout the site. The petitioner is also proposing some additional site improvements relating to landscaping that are outlined in your staff report. Again, similar to the previous case, marijuana businesses may be open between 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. A condition is listed under the recommendations section for this business as well. And to summarize, the proposed use as a micro business is classified as an industrial use in the zoning ordinance, and is consistent with existing uses and zoning designations within this general area. Off-street parking access is provided in compliance with the zoning ordinance, and so too is site screening, landscaping, sight lighting, sight lighting, drainage. And similar to the other case, there's a variety of measures and controls that the city has within the marijuana business ordinance to control any nuisances that arise. The administration and planning department recommend approval, subject to the same conditions as previously mentioned with the other case, with the modification that this specific business be approved for order control plan that is sufficient for a grower instead of just a retailer, and that will be reviewed as the condition says during the building permitting process. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. The petitioner in the audience, please. Yes, would you come forward and introduce yourself, sir?
Hello, good evening, oh, my name is Bilal Aliyan.
Very good. Anything you wish to add?
No, sir. I'm sorry?
Pardon?
Pardon me, I didn't hear you.
Anything you wish to add to, Mr. Ayew?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, this is a public hearing, we will open it up public, and we'll bring you back up.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone on my right wish to speak on this? Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Sir, would you please come back up, and we'll open up the commission for, for questions. Are there any questions with the commission? Yes. And, yes.
Same question, um, what type of ventilation system would you be using?
Ventilation?
Mm-hmm.
Well, um, my ventilation system is in my sketches, my architect has lined it all up, and, um, it's state-of-the-art. The, yeah, it's in awe, yes, ma'am.
This is for a site plan, or for approval and approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, any other questions? Commissioner Spiesak, did you have a question? Commissioner Rampaport?
I do. Uh, I think, uh, I think if I could be a little bit more, uh, a little bit more, uh, or if I could tamp down a little bit on, uh, on what, uh, my colleague was asking.
Yes, sir.
She's concerned about, uh, about the odor around the, uh, the facility.
Yes, sir.
And what do you plan on, what do you plan on doing, or, uh, do you plan on, uh, on taking special, uh, special attention to abating any sense, especially considering that it does appear that you're, uh, you're nearby residential?
That was the first thing we had discussed with the landlord and my architects, and, um, I didn't really have much involvement exactly in the specs and everything, but we outlined exactly how we want, and we wanted something state-of-the-art where we would have no problem with it from the beginning. I spared no expense, uh, in this facility, as my sketches are, um, very detailed in my dispensary and extremely detailed in my grow room and my facility, and everything's outlined perfectly the way that I'm sure, um, the state and the city would be happy with as criteria, but state-of-the-art.
Okay. Uh, and I'm, uh, sure that, uh, you're, you're paying attention to the last, uh, to the last issue. Um, we, uh, we as a community are also concerned about the, uh, about the appearance, the outward appearance of the, uh, of these facilities.
Yes, sir.
Making sure that they don't inadvertently turn into, uh, into hangouts where potentially bad things can happen. Uh, maybe you can take a moment to tell us a little bit about what, what your business is going to look like, because micro business doesn't really tell us a whole lot.
Right, so this is, uh, micro business is a little bit different, but in my facility, I've sketched out inside where I have a waiting room double the size of regular facilities, and I have security guards in and out just to make sure that there won't be anything on the premises. Um, my type of facility is more of, uh, healing, uh, more of a community place where we won't tolerate, and in case for the grand opening, if we do have an overflow of guests, we have everything outlined, go from the side to the back of the building, the way it would keep everything in order, but we're not anticipating any lines at all.
Fantastic.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for your candor.
Thank you.
Uh, I have nothing further.
Motion in order.
Go ahead and do it. You're right here.
Uh, if there's nothing further, I can take the motion.
Very good.
Uh, sorry, I said, I was gonna say, the case number.
Two-two-five-four.
Regarding case number two-two-five-four, at this time, I'd like to move to close the public hearing, waive the normal rules, and move that the case be referred to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the, uh, the same restrictions as outlined by the administration.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Rampaport, supported by Mr. Spiesak. Commissioner, roll call, please.
Roll call for the special end use for marijuana micro business at three-eight four hundred Bruzy.
Yes.
Folks. Yes.
Rep. Port.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes!
Yes.
Good luck, sir. Thank you, as you go for city council.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We'll move into our next case, which is also a public hearing. It's case two-two-five-five, preliminary, uh, phase, uh, PUD development plan for an attached condominium, uh, condominium development at three-three, uh, zero-six-five Ann Arbor Trail. Uh, Mr. Rayu.
Thanks, Chairman. Uh, the subject site is located on the south side of Ann Arbor Trail and east of Farmington. Uh, Farmington's not on the screen, but it's over, approximately over here. Uh, the overall site comprises of about one acre and contains a single-family dwelling. Uh, the property is zoned R-two, single-family residential. The petitioner proposes a PUD designation in order to construct a six-unit, two-building, attached condominium development. If approved, the existing dwelling will be demolished to accommodate, uh, the development. Properties to the north are zoned R-five, single-family, and developed by single-family dwellings. To the south, R-two, single-family residential and contains the Nakin Mills, uh, Nature Center property. To the east, uh, is zoned SPD and, uh, contains, or I'm sorry, developed with Arbor Oaks condominium development, and to the west, R-two, that's also Nakin Mills, uh, Nature Center property. This is what the site plan looks like, as previously mentioned, two buildings, three units each, for a total of five. There are two different unit types proposed, uh, one is a two-bedroom unit with a floor area of about twelve hundred square feet, and the other is a three-bedroom, um, with a floor area of about sixteen hundred square feet. The two buildings are ranch-style, um, uh, buildings approximately twenty feet in height, uh, one-story. Uh, each unit will include a single or double driveway depending on the unit type, plus a one-car garage. The zoning ordinance requires two parking spaces, uh, for each dwelling unit, plus one space, uh, for each five dwelling units for guest parking. Uh, the condominium development will contain one in, e, ingress-only drive and one egress-only drive at Ann Arbor Trail, and these are connected, uh, via an internal one-way access road, providing access to each additional unit, can kind of see it on this, uh, site plan Development of the site will also include the installation of landscaping, uh, and trees along the Ann Arbor Trail, um, frontage. Uh, the petitioner will also, uh, be required to install stormwater, um, management, uh, and that's being done here, uh, via stormwater detention pond at the southwest corner of the site. Uh, some site design, uh, notations in your backup. Uh, this is, as previously mentioned, the site plan. These are elevations, uh, not of the exact, uh, buildings, uh, as mentioned, they will be three units each, but this is exactly what the, uh, final design will look like. Again, just three units each. Uh, this is a preliminary phase PUD, um, at this moment. The petitioner, if, uh, approved tonight, will come back with a final phase PUD with more, um, developed plans, including engineering, um, landscaping and things like that. The administration and the planning department are recommending, uh, this petition be forwarded to the city council, uh, with recommendation to approve. The developers here tonight, and I'd be happy to answer your questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rayu. Is the petitioner here? Yes, sir. Would you introduce yourself?
Hi, thank you again. Reno Suave with Infinity Homes and Company. Uh, our address is forty-two four hundred Grand River, Suite one-twelve, Novi. Um, this is actually, to kind of start with, this is actually the third development we would be doing in the city of Westland, probably in the last thirty-six, twenty-four to thirty-six months. Um, if most of you are familiar, we were in front of the board on a couple of different projects. One was the Park West development, just down the street from this, seemed like everything is kind of consolidated in this one, one-mile corridor right now, but we redeveloped the, uh, the Skill Center site, um, twenty-four months ago or so, and we're right now, as probably most of you know, right, the building there. It's an eighty-home unit community, um, things are going really well, project's been a really good success, um, got any new residents moving in the city of Westland, uh, where it should be finished up, probably by the end of, middle of next year, we should be built out. And just actually, kitty-korn to this site, we have the Park Row development, which was the redevelopment of the former Perrinville School site, uh, which we purchased from the school board. So, that's a about twenty-eight, thirty-unit community, or multifamily. Actually, what's kind of, what, how this kind of got all brought into play is that we, because of what we're doing across the street, we had the owner, driving past this house, God knows how many times, we, the, uh, just see him kind of, uh, somewhat of an eyesore, what the current houses, the, the own, current owner reached out to us when he put it up for sale and saw the for-sale sign go up, reached out to him, and we figured this would be a good mix, it's right across the street, it's right in our wheelhouse, exactly what we're doing across the street, so, um, you know, you have multifamily to the east, you have the, obviously, the park to the south, Nakin Mills site to the, to the west, uh, so we figured it'd be a great mix for the, you know, great mix for the area, and again, we're doing this right across the street as well. Um, kind of like Mo was saying, there'll be two different floor plans, majority will be the two-bedroom, that seems to be more popular, so there's a mixture between twelve-hundred square feet, the three-bedrooms around fifteen, fifteen and some change, fifteen-thirty. Um, the unique thing about the three-bedrooms is that you really can't tell them the difference from the road, it, it's a bigger unit, I was really doing this, taking on more attic space. Uh, I think there was, I forgot what board member was, either in planning commissioner city council, we brought this through, the Park Row site initially, I think the concern was having low roof lines, so what we did is to give us more of kind of a, more aesthetically appealing, more of a grand appearance from the, the curb, we increased the roof line, so as you look at the plan in here, you'll see there's a taller roof pitch on this, so rather than having like a flat roof on this, like what they call like a four-twelve or a five-twelve pitch, this has, I believe, like an eight or nine-twelve pitch, so it just gives it more volume, as it does, so, um, most of this, exteriors are all brick, it'll be a combination of brick and vinyl, uh, brick on the sides and rear, again, this having just the one-story, the sides will be pretty much a hundred percent brick, except for your accidents around the front will be, will be vinyl. Landscaping will be, that's just the artist rendering, but landscaping, each one will be obviously well landscaped, uh, as Mo indicated, there'll be onsite storm detention. Uh, pending approvals, we're looking to start this spring, we're actually actively working across the street, we're framing our first building on Monday, actually, so, uh, we're excited, been a great, great, uh, it's great doing business in city of Westland, we're looking forward to doing another project, so, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we're gonna open it up to our audience, and then we'll bring you back up.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone on my right wish to speak? Yes, would you come up and introduce yourself, please?
I hope you have a copy of what I emailed to the board, so I don't have to stand up here a long time.
Uh, you can be very, you can be very comfortable up there, we will not bite you. You can be very comfortable.
I know, but I wasn't planning for this.
Yes, yes.
Okay, my name is Irene Martin. I live in Arbor Oaks. I do not back up to the complex, but I'm on the board of directors, and so I, I have a lot of questions on behalf of a couple people that do back up to the new proposal. I was told they were all ranches, but now I'm hearing split three-story, I mean, three-bedroom that is not a, it's typically not a ranch, because it's, it's above. So, my concern, depending on how the pitch is, is, are there going to be windows that are going to be facing towards or decks? So, someone is sitting up nice and high, looking down on our complex, so that, that is the concern. So, you guys don't want to read the email I sent, do you?
The email was shared with the mission.
Okay, so in order to be on record, and this would probably be directed towards the potential builder, that not knowing where the property line is at, but I think because we did walk it, and the little orange sticks in the ground, that the playscape, the log cabin toys, and the junk trees behind our units are like on our property, we've never had an issue with it because of, it was kids that lived there. But there's a lot of junk in there from former tenants, that we asked that they take all of that stuff out, including the kids' play areas. And I might have to read now.
That's okay.
Um, I need to get to that part. And I sent in pictures, which pretty much explains what I had just said to you about property lines and stuff, and that's all I got.
Okay.
Except, the junk trees, you see from the pictures, because of the deck, does give Eleanor some privacy, she is the first unit, so she will be impacted the most. They are junk trees, so we would be willing to work with the builder, if he wanted to remove them and just put a few pine trees in there, or your, your new owners can look at junk trees that I took here, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, if you're familiar with it. So, um...
Oh, I see.
I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Do you have any questions of me? Of me, and then maybe Eleanor will speak.
Well, we'll bring her up here. Mo's gonna put that back on the, uh, thing, so what she's talking is the unit, which would be to the top of our viewing. Yes.
Yes, you can make pictures here?
Yes, yes. Does somebody else like to speak? Yes. Oh, one at a time, and then we'll bring you up, sir. Yes, would you introduce yourself?
I'm Eleanor Orakowski.
Okay.
And I live right next to it.
All right.
And, uh, I think that's, um, five condos are awful lot for that small piece of property.
Well, the way they're designed, uh, it's the only thing that'll fit in there, they can't put any more in there, it's used up their footprint, and they have to have room for water detention, uh, according to the county rules, so, uh, uh, we don't, according to our guidelines, it's, the footprint is not oversaturated for the, for the property.
Will there be a fence between me and the condos?
No, because they're both housing units. Yeah, if, if it was industry, there would have to be a fence, since it's both housing, it really doesn't have to be a fence.
Yes. Can I see? Yeah, that's, that's correct, we require commercial to be screened from residential, you know, it's not aesthetically correct or required that residential be screened from residential, however, um, if the condo unit owners wanted to place a fence after the fact, like a residential fence or cyclone fence, that would be appropriate, and you would have to just file for a fence term and application, but in terms of like a screening wall or six-foot high masonry wall, that is not required, and, and that really is, uh, pursued just because of the aesthetics in residential, abiding residential.
How about the retention pond, will that be closest to me?
The retention pond is on the opposite side.
It's on the opposite end, if you look on the photo, it's in that far bottom triangle corner, and you're, you are going to be all the way to the right of that picture.
Oh, 'cause we got enough mosquitoes, we don't need a pond.
Yeah, you won't see the pond.
Oh, okay. Can I step in with Eleanor? And if you don't, we do that or not, that, um, because, you can stay with me, because of mosquitoes in our complex now, we pay like eight hundred and forty a month, I think, for making July, August per month for mosquito control, so is the retention pond going to have, like, moving water, that, like you said, because he does? So, it's not just sitting there?
Yeah.
Mo, would you like to explain that for the folk?
My understanding is that there will be water in there during major storm events?
Because that's a runoff, the retention runoff pond.
Probably be standing water in there as well, um, I'm not sure, I mean, you guys back up to the nature center?
We don't, yeah, we don't back up to the nature center. We back up to the house. So, and because the end of our complex backs up to Ed Heim, mosquitoes are very bad where we live, because the water does sit in Ed Heim.
I think when you find that, when you find that the, uh, most of that vegetation is cut out of there, mosquitoes do not like dry, hot air, so I think that they'll actually be a benefit to you.
Well, there's not a lot of vegetation on that property, and, until it gets further away from us. But I was just wondering if they were going to have the moving water where the house keeps bugs out of there?
No, no, it could be standing water on major storms, but not moving.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't think we want a fence between our property and theirs, because we want it to still look like country.
Sir, would you like to come up now? Thank you. Please identify yourself for us, we know who you are.
I'm Tom Ostofinski, also one of the board members at Arbor Oaks. I live right across the street in the complex from Eleanor Orakowski. Uh, the, we have a city sidewalk that parallels with Ann Arbor Trail, and will that be continued on?
Yes, the sidewalk will be there. Yes, the sidewalk will be there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, with one more question. Come on up and where we can hear you, please. That way the folks at home can hear you.
Because of the older house that was there, that our sidewalk goes to the edge of our property. It stops before the junk trees. So, are they gonna fill it all the way to our sidewalk? So it makes it continuous? Or are we gonna have to be responsible to put in a, a few feet?
The sidewalk, as required, will go from one end to this property line to the other end of the property line.
So we can have a, a number of feet where our sidewalk stops, but our property continues?
If you have a gap in your sidewalk, you will be responsible for filling that gap.
Except right now it ends at the junk tree. So if we leave the junk trees there, because they can't walk through the trees anyways, then I guess I don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, so we have a, a lot of gaps in our sidewalk network. So when there's development, we require developers to fill in those gaps, even if there's gaps adjacent to the development, just to kind of fill in the sidewalk network as development happens in the city. And sometimes it takes years to, to fill in like a small section of the city if development happens. So we can only request and require that developers fill in the sidewalk where they own property. So we will be required, if this is approved, to install a sidewalk within this property. So if there's a, a gap on your property, he's not gonna be filling that gap. But we can work with you for you to fill in that gap.
Yeah, he probably gets a better price than I would ever get.
Maybe, maybe you guys can work, work with.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Because of those trees that are there. And then I'm, I'm gonna go the other route with those trees that are there and Eleanor being the first unit, is all the traffic is directed, because it's a one-way street, that all the traffic is directed towards her backyard or her unit, depending on how far back they sit, and I can't tell. So like the evergreens or whatever, so her privacy's not invaded where her, when she sits on her deck, all she sees is people coming in and out of, of the complex, of the new complex.
I'm sure that maybe your condo association could work with a gentleman and maybe he'd give you a fair price and extend in the sidewalk onto your property. I don't know.
Oh, that's what I was just saying.
Yeah, that would be between, that would be between the two of you.
Yeah, I was just asking that question because ours stops and I don't know if it just stays empty or the trees stay there. But I guess that's something we work out later and what we decided to do.
He is required to do his entire property.
Yeah, I, I, I totally understand that.
Okay.
But I didn't know when it comes to like the junk trees and the stuff I proposed, that is it something that I should talk to the builder myself about, even though I voiced my concerns to the board?
Okay.
I mean, I don't understand the whole process.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Yes, sir.
All right, just to follow up on what I asked about with the connecting sidewalks. Currently, the, the, the trees that are on the easement in front of Arbor Oaks property, uh, between the existing sidewalk and Ann Arbor Trail, uh, quite overgrown and we're getting lifting of our sidewalk and so forth. Is there, there's nothing to do, this gentleman here. Do I need any, uh, permission of any kind to have those trees removed? Because we can't put in a new sidewalk with these huge trees and roots that are coming from just from the new sidewalks.
Yeah, he, he will have nothing to do with the trees that are on the condo property, of course.
Right. Would, would Arbor Oaks need some special permission to remove those trees off the existing easement? From, we need permission from the city to remove those trees so we can put in a decent sidewalk and not have it ruined by the big roots that, uh,
Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir.
Yep. So during final plan, this is preliminary plan, he will be required to submit a landscaping plan. Part of that landscaping plan will require that he obtain a tree permit to remove the trees on the site. If there's any trees that are on the easement side, um, and he needs them removed for sidewalk or some other reason, uh, the city can either approve their removal or can go in and remove them.
Okay, but the, this, this part is in front of Arbor Oaks property. It's not, it's not anymore, you know, it's, uh, and my question is just, again, can we get rid of those trees?
Sure.
Would we need, need special approval from the city or anything to do that?
So if Arbor Oaks wants trees removed that are in the easement, um, I can give you my contact information. Nicole can give you my contact information and then we can work together to get those trees removed for you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
You're welcome. If that's it, we'll open it up to the commission, sir, if you'd like to come back up. We will open it up to the commission. Questions, comments? Yes.
Uh, could he answer a couple questions that he had from, from the homeowners there?
Well, yes, he has to, he has to do his property, but nothing on.
You know, but there was a couple of questions that was directed to him that they wanted answered.
Yeah, so one of them was, uh, just confirm that it's a ranch, one foot.
Well, their setup is that they are ranch-style units, but they have, some have a bedroom upstairs, which is considered a split level. But if you look at the statics of the plan, they don't, from the road, they look virtually the same. Alls you have, the roof line's not really gonna change much.
I, I think she's concerned about the window. Is there gonna be a window?
Uh, the windows will tip, will face the rear. There'll be one window and a bedroom.
Facing out, not towards that.
Towards the park. Yeah, it won't be facing the side. But the majority, there's only six units. I mean, this is actually kind of a, a smaller project for, what our company normally does. But because we're, we're literally within like stone throws away from each project, it just kinda made sense for us. So, uh, but to answer your question, yeah, there'll be probably, I don't know the exact mix yet, there'll probably be four two-bedrooms and maybe, you know, one three-bedroom or five two-bedrooms and one three-bedroom. So, um, so yeah, that's something we haven't determined yet, but.
So, but the window, most likely is gonna look towards the pond.
That's correct, yeah.
And there would be no patio on that side of the, the facility next to them anyways.
They're not on the side. There'll be concrete patios on each, each rear of each unit, so.
Right, but not, not on the side.
No.
On the rear, right. So I think that'll answer their questions.
Are there two-story houses there?
No.
Are, are there two-story?
Not, not two-story.
Yeah. Yeah, they're not two-story, sir.
They were talking about a, a, a two-story house. There is no two-story house, right?
It, it's not your typical colonial. Again, like the roof lines are pretty much gonna look virtually the same from the road.
The roof line looks like they're all the same.
Yeah, there's not a, they don't have a tall roof line because it's a two-bedroom. The, 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 the three-bedroom is basically baked in, it's kind of, it's configured into that roof, the roof trust system. So you would never really look at the street and say, oh, that one looks kinda different. They all look the same from the road, so.
Cause I'm, I'm looking at it and I don't see anything that looks like there's an upstairs, so.
If you guys want, we should have a building framed up, even for the residents, um, you know, for Arbor Oaks. We'll have a building framed across the street. Probably, I think they're starting to frame the first building on Monday. So you'll, you'll get a good idea of what they look like from the street. That they're, again, they're not really, they're kind of a, this is a concern that got brought up at the last meeting we had, probably maybe eighteen months ago, you guys. The roof lines were actually kind of low and you guys wanted them kinda higher, just to make, to make it look kinda.
Not a bad-looking project, so.
We think it's, for what's there right now, I, I think this is a huge, huge upgrade to what's there. The house is pretty much a tear down, I think, so.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Folks.
Another question on, on this third bedroom. Um, I live in a condo and I have the third bedroom that's like a loft. Is it gonna be something like that where I, I don't know if it's considered a bedroom, but you could use it as a bedroom?
Yeah, it will, it's considered a bedroom because you have closets. You need to have, for like the guidelines to be considered a bedroom, you have closets. So it, it's a sizable bedroom. It's probably maybe fourteen by fourteen with closets. Which is good, especially right now, you know, the, 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 the demographic that we're catering towards with these units here and across the street, is, is your typical empty nester, you know, you're a single person who's moving in here, you know, um, someone downsizing from a house in the condo. Especially right now to have that extra space for either a home office or just whatever it may be. If you think it's, you know, it's, it's been pretty popular. But the majority of them are two-bedrooms, so we get more, more demand for those. We do threes.
Thank you.
Very good. Yes.
I, there was a couple outstanding questions from the residents. Actually, I remember reading a couple of them from the, um, email Nicole received. So I just wanted to address them. They're, they're minor, but I just wanted to address them. The dollhouse, um, and all of the related elements to that, my assumption is that they will be removed, um, during the demolition process or cleared when you guys, um, prep the site for development. Um, if you could just verify that in a second. And then, um, any junk trees, I, I assume most of the trees on the site will also be removed on the development site, um, as well, which I think was one of your other points. So if you can verify those two statements. Yeah, correct on both, Mo. Um, the, uh, whatever debris, I call it debris, whatever structures are left there, whether it be place keeps, whatever else, that'll be cleared out during demolition. If there's anything on there, I wasn't, you know, we haven't affirmed this, uh, property boundaries yet, but if any of these on their properties will be removed, either by us or by the current owner prior to us demolishing it. But the whole site, as Mo indicated, it's gonna be basically leveled. And then any, we try to preserve every trees we can, it just could be for obvious reasons. Um, but if, you know, if the trees are dead and dilapidated and become a nuisance down the road, we'll, we'll take them out now, so. Um, sidewalk connectivity, like I think it was indicated, or, um, we'll connect, we have to connect on our property. If they wanna, when the time comes, um, I have, I think both of the email addresses you sent in, we can just communicate with us. I can have my assistant send you an email so you have our contact info. And I don't think there's that much there. When you guys are ready, we can just give you a price wire people on site, so.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Motion's in order? Yes.
If I may, just before you make your motion, uh, there was a, there was a comment by the citizen that was, uh, she was a little bit confused about the, the purpose of this, uh, of this meeting and if, if her commentary was appropriate. And I wanted to assure her that this is the actual forum for exactly what she was looking for. Uh, this is, this is a forum where, where your voice cannot only be heard by this board, which, uh, which serves your voice, uh, to make a recommendation to the, uh, to the city council, but it is also an opportunity for your comments to be heard by the developer. And he has heard you.
Can I just add one more, clarify one more thing?
Sure. Okay, sorry. It's okay.
And, and I know he was saying he doesn't know where the property lines are at yet, but the, um,
They'll all be surveyed.
Thank you. But even though he's only responsible for the stuff that's on his property, a lot of this junk from that house is on our property. So I just wanna make sure that that gets removed because that wasn't ours. That belonged to the, the tenants or the owner that lived there.
I'm sure he'll look at everything there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Richard.
I move to close out case number two-two-five-five, preliminary phase PUD development plan for an attached condominium development, three-three-zero-six-five, Ann Arbor Trail, south side of Ann Arbor Trail, east of Farmington, Infinity Homes and Company, and send to city council for recommendation of approval.
With the modification of waiving the normal rules because it is a, uh, public hearing, I second.
Yeah, she said close twenty-two. She didn't say, but she said close twenty-two fifty-five. All right, yes, motion by, uh, Commissioner Richards, supported by Commissioner Rappaport. Roll call, please.
Uh, roll call votes recommend approval of preliminary phase PUD for an attached condo development at three-three-zero-six-five Ann Arbor Trail. Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Spezak?
Yes.
Mortel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good luck to go to city council. And folks, once again, thank you for coming and sharing your views. You're always welcome. And you should never feel nervous about coming up there. Okay? I know, well, but I'm sure that you'll have opportunities to get more practice and feel comfortable doing it. The next item on our agenda is consideration for the twelfth-month extension of the temporary moratorium on processing requests for land use approvals, permits, licenses, in commercial or industrial areas as cities to establish a caregiver grow and cultivation operation under the Michigan Meta, Medical Marijuana Act. Mr. AUM.
Uh, thank you, chairman. I don't have a lot on this one. Um, this is an existing twelve-month moratorium that started, um, approximately twelve months ago. And the request is to extend it, uh, today for an additional twelve months.
Excuse me, folks, I, excuse me, folks, could I have you go that way for your conversation so we can continue our business?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Don't forget your coat. Don't forget your coat. And your purse, yep. Thank you. Very good. Continue.
Okay, thank you. Um, again, so this is, uh, we previously adopted a twelve-month moratorium on marijuana caregivers. Uh, those are operations for, uh, grow and cultivation, in either homes, uh, or they can be in industrial or commercial areas if cities allow that. At the moment, we do not. Uh, these are operations for individuals that are, um, just simply wanna grow, uh, recreate. There's usually no retail or, uh, financial transactions that occur at the site. And some cities allow them in, in industrial areas, others allow them only in residential areas and a variety of other things. Currently, we allow them in residential areas. That's kinda what the state law was set up for. Uh, we have had interest a long time ago in a variety of individuals that wanted to set them up in industrial areas. Uh, we said no. We did not have an ordinance to say no, so we put this moratorium in place twelve months ago, uh, to basically say we're not accepting any applications or discussing any potential caregiver, um, operations in commercial or industrial facilities. That was supposed to give us time to prepare an ordinance. Uh, we were in litigation, uh, as one of the attorneys previously mentioned. So we ceased all, um, discussions for an additional ordinance. That legal stuff was determined or resulted in September. And we haven't had the opportunity to develop or discuss an ordinance, so we're asking, uh, the city council to extend the moratorium. It has to be heard by planning commission first, um, at a public hearing. So this is asking you to extend the, uh, temporary caregiver moratorium for an additional twelve months.
Thank you. Uh, sir, I realize you're with a paper. Would you like to speak on this? No? Okay. So we've had the public hearing. Uh, we'll open up the commission.
Oh, move.
So moved by Commissioner Spezak?
You have a question? Okay.
Uh, to the administration, the, uh, this moratorium, does it, it, I, I'm pretty sure you already addressed this, but I just wanna be clear. This does not stop, uh, individual private in their home growers from growing plants in their, in their closet, for example. This is more for, for actual operations that, uh, that provide, but do not rise to the level of, uh, of, of retail business. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
This temporary moratorium is, is specifically for commercial or residential?
Industrial.
I'm sorry, industrial.
Okay, so it has nothing, it has nothing to, to do with, with the citizens whom we represent right to, to, to do what they want in their closet, the privacy of their own home.
That's commercial and industrial.
Fantastic. I have no issues. Uh, I see the floor.
Motion by Commissioner Spezak.
Second.
Support by, and by Commissioner Durany. Roll call, please. Commissioner Spezak. Commissioner Durany supported it.
Yes, you did.
Roll call vote to, uh, approve the extension of the temporary moratorium on processing requests for land use approvals,
permits, licenses, and commercial or industrial areas to establish a caregiver grow.
No, that's it.
Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes, but I have a point of order. Did we close the public hearing, waive the normal rules?
It wasn't a public hearing.
Yes, it is a public hearing.
My vote is yes, but I'd. My vote is yes, but I'd like the hearing to be formally closed and the, the rules waived.
So if Commissioner Spezak could
Yes.
close the public hearing and Commissioner Dranny could support that?
Yes.
All right, continue. Roll call.
Richards.
Yes.
Uh, Sharp?
Yes.
Spezak?
Yes.
Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Motion is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Rappaport. Uh, last item on here is consideration of the posting of, uh, scheduled rental, uh, regular meetings for the year 2022. Is there a motion? So moved.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport. Supported by Commissioner Fokes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is ordered to adj, Mr.?
So moved.
Wait a minute. Mr. Ray, do you have anything else?
I don't. I actually have to be somewhere one minute ago, so I do not have any.
Does our sitting attorney have any, any motions or any comments?
No, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
A motion by, uh, Commissioner Dranny, supported by Commissioner Ruby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I got a study group.
Thank you, everyone.